President.
Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Westco.
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff.
President, we do have a call. Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we do have a couple of presentations this evening, so I'd better come down there. The first one is the proclamation. Whereas cancer is the number one disease killing children today, and whereas tens of thousands of children and teenagers worldwide will be diagnosed with cancer each year, and whereas childhood cancer spares no one, affecting kids from every social economic background, and whereas the Optimist International Clubs, such as the Raymore Peculiar Sunrise Optimists Club, prides itself on bringing the best out in kids and is dedicated to ridding the world of childhood cancer, and whereas the first step in eliminating any disease is being aware of the situation, circumstances, and issues involved, therefore I, Peter Kirkoff, Mayor of the City of Raymore, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2014 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Mike? Would you like to?
Just real quickly, it's great to be a pseudo-leader, I guess, of the Optimists Club. I don't know if anyone can really lead that group, but we're thankful to be involved with it. They've done a lot of great things for this community, and especially for childhood cancer. Thank you for your help.
And the next one, Eric, if you'll step forward. There isn't a whole lot to read on this one. I don't have a lengthy thing, which means that you're gonna have to talk for a little bit, so. "This has been presented to Eric Berlin in grateful appreciation for your service and leadership, the City of Raymore, 2003 to 2014." So, rather than standing up here and say a bunch of good stuff, I'm just gonna say I really enjoyed working with you over the years that I've been here, so, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And best wishes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, very much, and I would just like to say thank you so much to all of the members of the governing body that I've worked with over the years for your support and inspiration. I'm very happy to see Dale Jacobson's in the audience, and I did, being appointed to the TIF Commission, Mr. Jacobson was one of those members that hired me some eleven years ago to be your city administrator at the time, and now city manager. I'd just like to thank all the members of the community that make this community the wonderful place that it is. Also would like to just give my great appreciation to the city staff, all the city staff members that I've worked with over the years. I know that you know how dedicated they are to the city and how hard they work for you each and every day. I will always have very fond memories and thoughts of Raymore, and I'll be watching you from afar, but not too far away from my new perch north of the river. Thank you very much.
We'll move on. There are no personal appearances this evening, so we'll move on to staff reports. Mr. Berlin?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on the city clerk, Jeanie Warner.
Thank you. Section 215.030 fireworks of the city code requires fireworks vendors each year to obtain a permit for sale or display. The section further states that the permit shall be approved by the city clerk, and that also each location will be inspected by the fire marshal and the code enforcement officer. After inspection and approval, fireworks permit will be issued to each location. Just like to announce that the sale of fireworks is from 10:00 a.m. June 28th to 10:00 p.m. July the 4th. The discharge is 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. July the 1st through the 3rd, with 10:00 a.m. to midnight on July the 4th. This year I've received eight applications for approval for areas throughout the city. The locations are listed in the staff report included in your council packets. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanie. I'll call on the Parks and Recreation Director, John Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Good evening. Got a couple of big things coming up this weekend. Before I get into that, I just wanted to make sure that everyone got this, the new Raymore Review, full of fun-filled Parks and Recreation facts, and a couple interesting stories, too. This weekend, we have our Walter Camp Anvil Fishing Derby, and that will be at Hawke Ridge Park. Starts at 10:00 a.m. We're expecting a big crowd. We've had a lot of inquiries already about the fishing derby this year. This is the second year at Hawke Ridge Park, so we're really excited to have it there. Following that, we start the skateboard competition that will be at Recreation Park, at the Skate Park. Again, this is an event that's run by Dan Mapes. Dan's a former park board member, just does a terrific job. He does a great job of getting both sponsors and the skaters from our area excited about coming out to this event. We have a big baseball tournament this weekend, rather large for us. One of the fields in Kansas City could not handle this tournament, so they turned to us, and we, of course, said we would be happy to host it, so we're expecting a lot of teams and a lot of people in town this weekend. And finally, Arts in the Park, June 21st, a new event for us. All the area artists that we've contacted, we've had pretty good response from, so we're expecting a good crowd. We have entertainment set up for the whole day. We have a kids' area where they can come out and experience art and enjoy art, plus some concessions, so hope to see you all out, and that is June 21st at the Farmers Market Park area, and it's from 10:00 o'clock to 4:00. And finally, Farmers Market tomorrow night, and like the mayor says, it's gonna be 70 degrees and perfect weather, not like we're seeing this evening. So, we had over almost 48 booths last week, and great response from the community as far as people attending the event. We'll have entertainment again this week, so hope to see everybody out at the market. Any questions anyone might have?
Questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, John. I'll call on the Community Development Director, Jim Catterett.
Thank you. Just one item. The next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission is next Tuesday, June 17th. They will be considering the final plat application for the third phase of the Meadow Wood at the Good Ranch Development. It's a proposed 30-lot, single-family development along the, along Dean Avenue, the Good Ranch. So that's the only item on that agenda, the only item we have currently scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I'd like to call on Public Works Director, Mike Press.
Thank you. The only item I have in addition to my written report is the work on the culvert rehabilitation on 58 Highway East of Jay was scheduled to start this week with the weather forecast. It's unlikely. Mayor, could you schedule some ribbon cuttings or?
I'll see if I can. See, I believe my wife was responsible for the weather at the last ribbon cutting, so I'll ask her to do something.
But once it does get rolling, there will be lane closures, so there will be flagmen out there. We'll be, remain open to traffic, but just ask folks to use caution when they're traveling through there.
Questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I'd like to call on the Emergency Management Coordinator, Ryan Murdock.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Good evening. I haven't met a lot of you personally. Ryan Murdock, the Emergency Management Coordinator, and I started for the City of Raymore January 13th. So I just wanted to give you guys a quick review of kind of what I'm up to and where our department is headed with the Emergency Management Agency. First off, we just completed the review of our local emergency operations plan. We submitted that to Mr. Berlin, and then the state will be coming in to review our plan here sometime in the late summer, and then upon approval, then we'll be getting a copy to all of you to approve as well. Second thing is, we have recently been trying to expand our Community Emergency Response Team, or our CERT team. Over the past about five months now, we've increased the attendees coming to our meetings from the high single digits to 15 to 18 members are now showing up at meetings. We recently had 15 complete certified first aid training at our May CERT meeting, and we'll be holding a CPR class actually for our CERT members, as well as some members of the Missouri militia who are going to be coming and joining our group as well. We've also incorporated the CERT members from Lake Winnebago and a few members from Peculiar who have asked to be coming to our CERT meetings since they don't have an established group at this time, so we're kind of trying to make it almost a Cass County CERT group at this point. Harrisonville does kind of have their own thing, but we're trying to incorporate as many people that want to be involved in the group as possible. One of the biggest things that I wanted to do when I was hired here was to get out to the community and do as much community outreach as we can to encourage people to have some sense of emergency preparedness, and kind of what I found in is that, one, businesses are very open for us coming in and helping them out with those particular plans. We've gone to numerous businesses already just in my four and a half months. I've been going to businesses with the Fire Marshal, Randy Powers, and then we've also visited Foxwood Springs to talk to them about their emergency plans, but more than anything, we've also talked to a lot of residents. We've started the Raymore Emergency Management Facebook page and a Twitter account just as another avenue to get them information on emergency preparedness, and we've had a really good response. Those have only been going for about two weeks now, and we've had a really good response to both of those social media avenues. We're gonna continue to work with residents. As some of you know, we did experience some damage in Stonegate just a week ago from the storms, and so we were out in that community talking to many of those residents about the damage that they sustained to their homes and property, and what they can do to hopefully get that repaired. So, over the course of the rest of the year, the goal of my, of our agency is going to be to equip the communications trailer, which we'll be getting back actually tomorrow, and we'll have that out at the different summer festivals, especially the Fall Festival coming up, and then we'll continue to work on promoting best practices within emergency preparedness and helping the citizens of Raymore be as prepared as possible for any emergency. So I just wanted to give a quick update and say hello since I hadn't met a lot of you, so.
Questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. That concludes staff report, sir.
Okay, thank you. Move on to committee reports, and we had a couple of ribbon cuttings recently. On the 3rd of June, we had ribbon cutting for the Whole Health Pet Center at 18011 East State Route 58. It's a huge facility just outside of town there, and it looks like they can handle barney or anything. And then on the 5th, we had a ribbon cutting at Creative Hands Quilt Shop and Decorative Painting in 1907 West Foxwood Drive. They, it's in the old Mott Home, the upper floor of the Mott Home, and they're, they have completely, the inside of it, I think, is amazing how much they have in there. So if you're into quilting or decorative painting, that's a great place to go. And then we tentatively have a ribbon cutting coming up on the 17th for Fearless Dance Center at 104 North Madison, and that will be at 11:30 on the 17th. And moving on to the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, to include Item A, City Council Minutes from May 12th, 2014. Item B, the Hubach Hill Road-North Cass Parkway Community Improvement District Board Appointments. Item C, the License Tax Review Committee Appointment. Item D, the Appointment of Dale Jacobson to the TIF Commission, and Item E, the Acceptance of the Recreation Park Ballfields Renovation Project.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda, and I'll recognize that Mr. Jacobson is in the audience. Hi? Or, let's see. Motion in a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. And the motion carries unanimously. Yeah, it's noticeable when we've skipped a meeting. I have to refer to my notes even more often, so. We'll move on to unfinished business. The second reading of Bill 2962 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2962 by Title Only, an ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, annexing two segments of right-of-way to the south side of Hubach Hill Road, east of South Wind Estate Subdivision Road, located in Section 25 and Section 26, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, Cass County, Missouri, pursuant to Section 71.014 of the Revised Statutes of the State of Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2962.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2962, the annexation of County right-of-way of Hubach Hill Road.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2962. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hubach?
I've been reading about this, and I'm trying to figure out what we gain as a city, what we gain by annexing all this road. The county, I can understand where the county is coming from because they don't have to do any maintenance. We're doing it then. Are we going to get snow removal all the way through on that street? Are we going to end up putting curbs and gutters so that it looks like the rest of it? Just what are we going to do when we annex? That's the question that I have in my mind, then, is does that street become like the rest of the city streets once it's annexed? We haven't talked anything about what we were going to do, if we would curb it, if we were going to do anything else. So, am I missing something here?
Well, I think you've asked about the curbing. Mr. Berlin?
The annexing the right-of-road right-of-way does not obligate the council to make any other improvements to the current road.
Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, since that is, there are two main streets getting us out of Raymore from 291 to 49 Highway. There's either 58, or there's Hubach. Those are the two. And I'm wondering about having snow removal all the way through on that so that people can get in and out of town from Raymore, and that's part of my concern.
Mr. Berlin?
It would, we would begin, and we're already doing it, but we would remove snow from the entire road right-of-way that's in the city limits.
Other discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Confirming. Yes, we do. Okay, thank you. Like I said, you skip a week and things get a little hairy. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? One, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries unanimously. And I'll get better as tonight goes on. We have the second reading of Bill 2964 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2964 by Title Only, an ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2011 capital budget.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2964.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2964, the budget amendment for the Ryan Steakhouse Access.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Holman?
I think I stated my point on this in our first vote. The only way you don't remember that is if you weren't here. And I'm not gonna hold it up this time. I'm not gonna vote against it. It's a practical move, but this is a public safety issue that is not going to go away. I know the city recognizes that. The staff recognizes that. I simply want to go on record. This is an unacceptable situation. Staff did what they could to do to rectify it, and like I said, just as a member of public forum, I want to let people know that we are going to have to address this at some point in some fashion someday. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2964. All in favor? One, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries unanimously. And the second reading of Bill 2963 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2963 by Title Only, an ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2014 capital budget.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2963.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2963, the budget amendment for the amendment of the 2014 curb program.
Second.
There is a motion in a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2963. Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries unanimously. And may we have the second reading of Bill 2965 by Title Only?
The second reading of Bill 2965 by Title Only, an ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with R.L. Phillips Construction, Inc. for the West Side Remodeling Project, City Project Number 14-BZ-BG-001, in the amount of $26,250, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2965.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2965, a word of contract for the City Hall West Side Remodel Project.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2965. Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries unanimously. And that takes care of all business. We'll move on to news, new business, and we'll have the first reading of Bill 2967 by Title Only.
The first reading of Bill 2967 by Title Only, an ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, annexing property described as Lot 1 of Willow Hills Subdivision, Section 10, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, Cass County, Missouri, and belonging to Donna M. Sodart pursuant to Section 71.014 of the Revised Statutes of the State of Missouri.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. Bill 2967 proposes the voluntary annexation of Lot 1 of the Willow Hills subdivision. Lot 1, the common address for the property is 303 East Score Road, so this lot is in the upper northeast quarter of the subdivision. The Willow Hills subdivision contains a total of 30 lots. It was originally platted in Cass County. If this annexation is approved, there will be only two lots remaining in the subdivision that are still in the unincorporated part of the county. If the property is annexed, it will retain its current zoning, which is Cass County Rural Residential. Part of the agreement on the annexation is for the city to then do a city-initiated rezoning to bring the property under city zoning, which is rural residential. No change in the zoning category for the property, other than just having a city designation on it. The annexation agreement was signed by the applicants included in your packet. Its staff does recommend the council accept the proposed findings that were included in the staff report and approve the annexation request, the annexation as requested.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Councilmember Holman?
Mr. Catterett, you mentioned if this property were to be annexed, then there would remain two properties still in the subdivision. Are those improved, and are there occupants on those properties, or are they empty lots?
They are approved. They currently are not connected to the city water. That typically is what is bringing the properties into the city, so those two properties improved, but not connected to our city water at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions for staff? I'll give the applicant a chance if you want to come up and say anything to the council. If not, just stay there and it's fine. Either way.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and others present, I'm Donna Sodart. Like Mr. Catterett said, 303 Score. I've lived there for 37 years, and am applying to be for voluntary annexation into the city. Councilwoman Hubach has been after us for years and years to do this, so I give her a lot of credit for me being here, and I'd like to mention my appreciation to Mr. Catterett, who's been very patient with me. I don't know what else to say, because my brother is Mr. Military, and he always says to his people, "If you can't say it in three minutes, don't get started." Unless there's any questions, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a good, good rule, three-minute rule. We'll employ it up here. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2967.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2967, the voluntary annexation for Willow Hills Lot 1.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2967. Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to a public hearing. This is a liquor license renewal for the Freedom Stop, so I'll open up the public hearing by asking for a staff report, I suppose.
I'll call on city clerk.
Thank you.
Lori O'Malley, on behalf of Payall Enterprises Doing Business as Freedom Stop at 503 East Walnut, has filed an application for her 2014-2015 liquor license. And the applicant has met the requirements of city code and staff recommends approval. Approval by a majority of the council is also required, and the approval is final subject to approval by the State of Missouri. The applicant is in the audience. Should council have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make a statement on her behalf? And keep it to three minutes?
I'll do my best. Hi, I'm Lori O'Malley with Payall Enterprise, Doing Business as Freedom Stop, 503 East Walnut, Raymore, Missouri. Here to submit my application to the city council for renewal of our 2014-2015 liquor license.
Well, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you. I'll open the floor for public comment, if anybody would like to come forward. And seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and move to dispose of this item.
Point of order first. On our packet, it says the 2014-2014 liquor license. Is that just a Scrivener's error?
Yes, correction was noted. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the 2014-2015 liquor license renewal for Payall Enterprises Doing Business as Freedom Stop.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the liquor license renewal. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too. Move on to the first reading of Bill 2966 by Title Only.
The first reading of Bill 2966 by Title Only, an ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving the final plat for Ridgeway Villas at The Legends, a subdivision in Section 17, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, in Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and present their proposal?
I'll be brief, like formerly stipulated. My name is Axel Novion. I'm with GeoSource. We're an engineering company. We're seeking approval of the final plat for this project. And a quick overview of the project. It's a 56-unit, two-story development consisting of duplexes all the way up to eight plexes, located south of 58 Highway, east of Mott Drive, and west of Scott Drive. The presented final plat is replat of part of Lot 4 and all of Lot 5 of The Legends at Raymore. The plat creates three separate lots and one tract, which includes the Stormwater Basin. Additionally, an existing storm sewer line and easement are relocated. This replat reconfigures the internal land boundaries to better utilize the space for the proposed development. That's all I have. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant? Thank you. Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. The Bill 2966 is the request for the final plat approval for Ridgeway Villas at The Legends. Generally, the property located south of Cinnabar Drive, along Mott Drive, Scott Drive, and Ridgeway Drive. And as was indicated, this is actually a replat of lots that are currently platted with The Legends at Raymore Subdivision. The property proposed for the final plat is currently zoned R3A, which is multiple-family residential. These lots have been zoned that way since 2003, when The Legends final plat came forward. And as was indicated, the plat consists of three lots and one tract. I note that the plat, again, which is a replat, it eliminates a total of 78 individual townhome unit lots. Each of the lots of The Legends plat, back in 2003, were platted as individual lots. This is a total of 78 of those individual lots being removed as part of this replat, and then the plat before you creates just three large lots with a total of 56 dwelling units spread over, over the three lots. So it's actually a reduction by 22 units with the approval of this plat. The, as was indicated also, the public infrastructure necessary to serve the lots has been installed, so water, sewer, storm sewer utilities are currently available within the subdivision for construction of units on the lots. The Planning Commission did submit proposed findings of fact to your consideration. The findings include the fact that the plat is the same, substantially the same, as what was initially approved, another preliminary plat. The final plat does comply with all the conditions, restrictions, and requirements of our Unified Development Code, and all the other applicable ordinances of the city. of our Unified Development Code and all the other applicable ordinances of the city. And it does comply with the conditions that were attached to the preliminary plat approval. The Plating Commission considered the application at its June 3 meeting. They did vote 6-0 to accept the findings of fact. And for the case, the request for the final plat to the city council with the recommendation of approval, it was subject to one condition, and that being that the final plat drawing that is submitted for recording purposes does need to include a 10-foot utility easement along the west side of Lot 1 and a 5-foot utility easement along the north side of the lot. Those are minor changes to the plat that we typically would have corrected when the final version for recording purposes is brought forward. Engineering Division submitted their memorandum regarding the provision of facilities to the lots. And at this time, that concludes staff report.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could call on the city attorney to discuss the scope of the council's review of this item tonight from a legal standpoint. And Mr. Fearborn will hand out a handout that the city attorney brought with him.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. I would thought it would be apropos in light of some of the history that's gone with this project that we review the narrow scope of review that's before the council tonight. That is pursuant to our Unified Development Code, Section 470.130, the three sole factors that are few before you tonight for administrative review are: is this final plat substantially the same as the approved preliminary plat? Does it comply with the conditions and restrictions and requirements of our applicable ordinances? And does it comply with any condition attached to the approval of the final plat? Mr. Catterett has testified and presented to you, has the preliminary plat here and has testified to you that all of those things are met. When that is the case and the instance here, under Missouri law and what I've handed to you, your approval of the plat becomes ministerial. That is, once all the requirements and subdivision regulations have been met, the approving body does not have discretion to deny plat approval. That is, you may disagree now whether this should have multifamily housing, but that was decided in 2003 with the zoning. There was, I recall, a request for tax credit on this property that was denied by the council, but they may have achieved this by other means. That's not the issue before the council tonight. And so I did feel it important because of some of the emotion and feelings that had come before on this project that I direct the council to the scope of its legal review with respect to this item and would be open to any questions, but would suggest, despite your personal feelings about the project, perhaps, or the applicant's, that what you're about is these three factors outlined on page 165. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Stevens?
I just have one from Joe. It just doesn't matter how we vote. It says going through no matter what. I mean, we have no discretion.
It certainly matters how you vote. What I've indicated is you don't have legislative discretion like you would if this was coming before you for the search time for zoning as to whether or not it's R3 or that was coming, whether this was the correct plan. Since those issues were resolved by prior councils and prior issues, and this is merely does the final plat meet the requirements and the, of our ordinances and what was represented in the preliminary plat. So we do need an affirmative vote, but no, you don't have the same legislative discretion you have in many other kinds of issues that will come before you. And that's why I thought I should make my special little speech here tonight.
Other questions of staff? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2966.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2966 Ridgeway Villas Final Plat.
I'll second you.
I have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2966. Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition? One, two. The motion carries. The vote is six to two. Move on to the next item. This is Bill, first reading of Bill 2971 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2971 by title only. An ordinance approving a transferee agreement between the city of Raymore, Missouri and Ridgeway Villas at The Legends LP.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Rich Wood with the law firm of Gilmore &amp; Bell, our special economic development counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The transferee agreement that's on the agenda for your consideration tonight is a fairly routine agreement that is required anytime there's a transfer of a property interest within a tip-redevelopment area. It's required under the TIF contract that was entered into several years ago for the Foxwood Village TIF. The agreement is primarily for the benefit of the city in that it is an acknowledgement by the property owner who's buying property within the tip-redevelopment area that they will comply with the requirements of the TIF, in that they will pay pilots, subject to land use restrictions that were in the TIF contract. Those are really the two primary things that we look at, that we want compliance from property owners on. So again, this is a routine agreement that we do anytime there's a property transfer within a tip-redevelopment area. It's required by the TIF contract and it's on your agenda for consideration. I'd answer any questions you have.
All right. Questions? Councilmember Morehead?
It's my understanding that Bill 2966 and 2971 were dealing with the same parties. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. This may be a minor technicality, but in light of the state statute regarding fictitious name registration, we've got one party, which is Foxwood Plaza Homes LLC. We have a contract here for Foxwood Plaza LLC. That's a completely separate legal entity
I may be misunderstanding your question, but the transferee agreement that's on the agenda is with Foxwood, or I'm sorry, with Ridgeway Villas at The Legends LP, correct?
I'm looking at Bill 2971. Do I have the parties wrong?
It should be between the city and the Ridgeway Villas.
So Ridgeway Villas at The Legends LP is who the party is?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe Foxwood Plaza is the current owner of the property who would be selling to Ridgeway Villas at The Legends LP.
Are you comfortable with that, councilmember?
Well...
Okay, I'll let you look at it.
We can have that during our discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Hubach, I think, wanted the floor.
I wanted to know if this was like what the previous one was, a ministerial act where we don't have any, say so on it. I mean, we've already approved the other part. This is the second part of it. So do we need to approve it too?
It's...
Without reservation. Is it a ministerial act?
Ms. Hubach, it's not a ministerial act. It's a little bit different standard here. It's a reasonableness standard. This is a contract issue as opposed to what Mr. Willow was describing as your legislative discretion and ministerial discretion. The TIF contract says that you can't unreasonably withhold approval of the transfer. So the basis of a decision to not approve the transfer would have to be grounded in some belief that the proposed new property owner couldn't comply with the requirements of TIF. In other words, they couldn't make pilot payments or they couldn't comply with the land use restrictions in the TIF contract.
Other questions? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2971.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2971 transferee agreement with Ridgeway Villas.
I'll second you.
There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2971. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Morehead, I'll let you go first.
Okay. And since this will be coming for us twice, I'm hoping the city attorney can help me understand this because I'm seeing the Ridgeway Villas Final Plat, the applicant was one entity, which is, and I'm going back and looking directly at our case, our staff report, the applicant was Jeffrey Myers Foxwood Plaza Homes LLC. But yet, this is a green transferee agreement with Ridgeway Villas at The Legends LP. I'd like a little more clarification on that.
This may help. The way this works is the transferee agreement has to be approved before the conveyance can happen. So I believe, and Mr. Willow, correct me if I'm wrong, but the current owner would have filed the replating application because the transfer to the new owner has not yet occurred. One of the steps that had to happen before that transfer can occur is approval of the transferee agreement tonight.
As a follow-up, then, the applicant that was here for Bill 2966 is not going to be the owner's, they are not Ridgeway Villas at The Legends LP?
2966 was the plat, correct? Who was the...
Mr. Catterett, can you help on that?
Councilmember Morehead, what page in the packet are you?
I'm on page 176 for the transferee agreement.
Thank you.
On Bill 2966, I am on page 161 of the packet.
That's my question, Mr. Catterett. 61 indicates Foxwood Plaza Homes LLC is the applicant.
Foxwood Plaza Homes LLC is the current owner of the land of the proposed Ridgeway Villas plat. They have the current title holder to the land.
And so is the application filed by the applicant Ridgway jointly or with the owner's consent? Or how did you receive?
With the owner's consent.
Does that help, councilman?
Well, no, actually, because again, since I saw these as two companion pieces, so what we're saying is that the current property owners who got the final plat approved and then now they are transferring it to a new owner to complete a transferee agreement for a TIF district? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I think that's correct, which is the current owner and applicant are the ones with standing to, well, the applicant can jointly with the owner apply for the plat approval. They then, they intend the use and the transferee agreement will make them subject to the TIF agreement as they become owner in lieu of the person that was originally under the TIF agreement. The applicant may be able to clarify who these two entities are with respect to Ridgeway Villas at The Legends LP. I consider those the true applicant for both because they want to become the ultimate owner who wants the final plat and they want this transfer
You'll have to use the mic. And I have to use the mic, too. You'll have to use the mic.
Everybody's confused, so I'll try and shed some light. I'm Stuart Foster with Realty Assets. I represent the property and the owner on the sale of the property. The property was bought by Jeff Myers as Foxwood Plaza LLC. Then the residential portion, because there's a commercial portion surrounding Culvers and to the east of Mott Drive, the commercial portion was separated from the residential portion and the residential portion was put into Foxwood Plaza Homes LLC, which is what the only portion that's being sold to the applicant Ridgeway Villas. Because the water retention for both commercial and residential is on Lot 9, which qualifies for TIF funding to maintain it, there has to be a transfer agreement. Foxwood Plaza Homes is selling the residential portion to Ridgeway Villas and the only part of the TIF that's involved is what maintains the water retention. But by law, there has to be a transfer agreement acknowledging the new owner.
Does that help?
It's perfectly clear we're going to have a new owner suddenly appear at the last minute. So, okay.
Councilmember Kellum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of concerned and I'll question this right out. Mr. Stewart, you said that the retention pond is maintained by the TIF contract? And I remember back in those days that there was a CID passed also that took care of the maintenance of the area. And at that time, I believe all of that area was encompassed in that CID, or am I incorrect? I just want to make sure that the funds we're talking about are able to or were originally coming from the TIF and not the CID.
Joe would have to answer that. I know that those co-mingle, the TIF and the CID co-mingle until the TIF bonds are paid off. The CID money and the TIF money both co-mingle until you pay off the TIF portion. The Ridgeway Villas produces no money into the TIF and is eligible to receive no money out of the TIF or the CID, neither one. But because they will become the owner of the common area that has part of the water retention on it, there has to be agreement that the TIF, because it also serves all those commercial lots, will continue to maintain it. That's all it's about. I don't know if I'm answering your question or not.
Why don't we let Special Finance Counsel Wood address your question, Councilman Kellum?
Yeah, the subject property that we're talking about, the stormwater, is within both the TIF and the CID. The stormwater project was to be reimbursed with CID revenues, not TIF Does that answer your question?
As Mr. Wood had indicated, the funds that go for the maintenance of the CID would be, what would be used on the very back end of the project if there were any maintenance costs that had been incurred and turned in? The TIF monies, the other thing with this is there will be a tax increment that is collected off of this that is different that will go into the special allocation fund. But those monies are not, there is nothing within the Ridgeway Villas project that allows those monies to funnel back to them through the TIF special allocation fund. In other words, there will be payment of revenue associated with the TIF from the project, but they will not receive any money back.
Other questions of staff? Or let's see. We were in discussion, actually, weren't we? Other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2971. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. In opposition? In opposition, a first reading of Bill 2971 passes. And let's go on to the first reading of Bill 2974 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2974 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with WillPave Inc. for the roadside trail rehabilitation project, city project number 14-196-201, in the amount of $184,427.72, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report, please.
Thanks, sir. I'll call on Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The fiscal year 2014 capital budget included $200,000 for rehabilitation of our roadside trail network. Staff conducted an assessment of the roadside trails and identified the following work that is included in this contract: reconstruction of the Foxridge Drive Trail from 58 Highway to Johnson Drive, reconstruction of the Dean Avenue Trail from Lucy Webb Road to Indian Grass Way, and isolated patch repairs to the trails along North Madison, Lucy Webb and South Madison Street. We do recommend award of the contract to the low bidder, WillPave Inc.
Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2974.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2974, the award of contract for the roadside trail rehabilitation.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2974. Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to item F, Bill 2968. May we have the first reading of Bill 2968 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 2968 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri approving an agreement with Credit Control LLC to provide bad debt collection services for the city.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thanks, sir. The city contracts with an outside agency to perform collection services for outstanding delinquent utility accounts. Firms providing these services typically charged by taking a percentage of the collections that are able to retrieve for the city. City staff recently issued an RFP for firms to provide pricing for a one-year period with the ability to renew for two additional one-year periods. with the ability to renew for two additional one-year periods. Three firms responded to that RFP. We are recommending that the city council award the contract to Credit Control LLC, that's our current vendor. Credit Control LLC was determined to be the lowest and best respondent to this proposal.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Hubach?
I was wondering why now are we deciding to do this? Has it just suddenly had a spate of delinquents?
No, ma'am, it's just the, it's just the end of the three, the last three-year period and so it was time for this one to be put out again on the street, just as...
Okay, and there's no one near in the area, because this is in Hazelwood, St. Louis area, is there anyone closer in the Raymore area that does this kind of work?
These were the firms that responded.
Other questions of staff? Councilmember Kellon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have the ability under this contract to automatically extend for a period of either one, two, or however many years? Or is this just something that every three years we're gonna go through?
We typically do this every three years unless there's a problem after one or two years, in which case we'd bring it back to council. But if everything's running along smoothly, then it would be automatically renewed unless one part of the other decided to not renew.
Other questions of staff? Councilmember Hubach?
Another question, is I understand it as like utility bills that aren't being paid for, something like that? If they don't pay for it, as I understand Missouri law, you come back on the owner of the property. So then, does the owner of the property get the bad debt collection notice then? Is that the way it works?
Yes, ma'am.
So if I had a piece of property, any of us here had a piece of property and they defaulted, then they, we would be, they would go against our credit ratings then?
Well...
I mean, before you get started on something like this, I want to know exactly what we're getting into. Because if, if, if a landowner can be held responsible for a tenant's debt, then that goes, wouldn't that go against their credit rating then? And they would show that they were delinquent on paying their bills?
I imagine it would, but all this is about is us trying to get what we can from a party from whom we have not been able to collect and the collection agency goes and tries to collect what they can and then we, they get a percentage and we get the rest.
Okay, and so you've, you've already, and they're trying to collect, you've already tried the owner of the property as well as the tenant then? Thank you.
This is a last resort, Ms. Hubach. There's shut off of utilities and there's direct contact made to the tenant and owner before it would go into this process. This is, after those things have occurred and the bill's now outstanding, the city trying to make some effort to collect its delinquent utilities.
Exactly.
Other questions? Councilmember Westcott?
Do we put liens on the property before this or after this point?
If, if we cannot collect from them any, any portion of the utility bill, we can put a lien onto the property. And once a year in September, we have a timing issue with that, but once a year in September, all past due bills that do have the lien go down there. But it is still difficult if people have moved. As an example, right now we have approximately $182,952 in late bills, of which the current delinquent company, and just to address something, Councilmember Hubach, this isn't a new program. That we're just simply renewing a three-year contract here. But they, they estimate that about $50,000 worth of that delinquent account is hot. They'll be able to get it.
Councilmember Westcott?
If we can't collect 100%, you know, let's say that the, the collection agency is only gonna collect 50%, do we still put a lien for the remainder on the, on the property?
If we can find them, yes, we do. The problem is if they've moved, if it's a tenant issue, because we will not attack the credit rating of, say, a landlord if, because their tenant did not pay. So if they've moved and we can't find them, which is commonly the case, it's very difficult to make the collection.
So i- is that, is that the challenge with the balances that are outstanding? Is that where most of it's coming from, is it's not owners of the property, it's actually people who are renting or they've been sublet?
Yes.
Other questions of staff?
For example, Councilmember Westcott, in large commercial accounts, the staff and I have looked at the difficult procedure of perhaps cutting people off when they've had negotiations and almost brought them to you where we thought there would be substantial public impact or whatever, you would be notified. So we do it on a case-by-case basis. I would say by and large, Jim, these are, tenants are smaller amounts that are not going after this collection agency is much more efficient at collecting than your normal legal basis.
Councilmember Morehead, did you have a question of staff?
Mr. Fairpoint, so, so, so we can understand the process here. If we no longer can collect it, that we turn this account over to this third-party company. If this third-party company is unsuccessful, they turn that back to us and then we can continue on with whatever legal method we have available to us at that time.
That is correct. And then, at some point in time, which the council will actually be seeing in the next several meetings, we simply have to write off the debt. If we have not, if it's not collectible through a lien process with the county, we have to write off the debt and you will be seeing bad debt write-off in the next month.
All right. One more questions of staff. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2968.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2968, the award of contract for the collection of delinquent accounts.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2968. Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four. Motion carries unanimously. And I'm getting back into the stride of running a meeting and the next item has two bills under the one letter. So, you know, I was going good there for the longest time, but I think I'll be able to handle it. May I have the first reading of Bill 2972 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 2972 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Vance Brothers, Inc. for the 2014 micro-surface project. City Project Number 14-191-202 in the amount of $131,932.88 and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
A staff report, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. I thought my last meeting would be a good time to throw you a curve.
Well played, sir. Well played.
The reason we did so is that in, in its 2014 capital budget, the city council approved expenditures of $500,000 for this year's street maintenance work. We did this, bid this out as two different contracts. And those two contracts, which are before, before you for approval, this one and the next one total $366,000. And just wanted to make that, that clear as we were presenting these two contracts. So to present the staff report on the micro-surfacing award of contract, I will call Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As Mr. Berlin indicated, we broke this year's program into two components. The reason for that is the contractors that are available do micro-surfacing work, there's very few of them, and over the last several years, they've actually been subcontracting with the contractors that are doing the mill and overlay and the other portions of the work. So what we, what we took a look at and was talking with the contractors, by breaking out the micro-surfacing specifically, we realized the cost savings with the, with the project. So we do recommend award to the low bidder, Vance Brothers, in the amount of $131,932.88.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Holman?
I've got a couple. I'm gonna show my ignorance, I understand general surfacing and complete road bed rebuild. Can you generally explain the micro-surfacing difference?
Micro-surfacing is sometimes referred to also as a, as a thin lift overlay. It's a, it's polymerized asphalt with an, with an aggregate mixed in that is applied to the, to the surface. It does not provide a structural improvement, but it does provide, it fills in the smaller cracks, it also provides durability and some traction because a lot of the streets we are, we are working on, the surface asphalt is oxidized off and then the aggregate has, has become polished. So this provides a new, new surface for the asphalt.
I had one more, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I was kind of reading through the details of the work to be performed in the contract and it talks about them doing temporary striping. Is that correct? They do some temporary striping as part of the project? And then I assume that we take over some type of striping maintenance?
They temporary stripe and final stripe.
I'm sorry?
They will temporary stripe and then final stripe.
Okay, and then we take over, we have some type of maintenance beyond that? All right, thank you.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2972.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2972, the award of contract for micro-surfacing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2972. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Two, three, four. Motion carries unanimously. All right. May we have the first reading of Bill 2973 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 2973 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Phillips Paving Company, Inc. for the 2014 street preservation project. City Project Number 14-191-201 in the amount of $234,091.25 and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
And thank you. A staff report, please?
Thanks, sir. I'll call Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This contract contains crack sealing, milling overlay, and patching for the streets. This is, the particular streets we're gonna be working on are outlined on our council memo. I do want to also point out that this does include some work on Southwind Drive. The work we're gonna be doing there is to be milling up the existing asphalt, asphalt and chip seal surface that is there, stabilizing the base, and then doing a double chip seal surface similar to what we did on Lucy Webb Road and Prairie Lane a few years ago. We feel that that, for this low-volume road, that is an appropriate reconstruction method. We do recommend approval of the contract to the low bidder, Phillips Paving.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2973.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2973, the award of contract for the street preservation.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2973. Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to item H, Bill 2969. May I have the first reading of Bill 2969 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 2969 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending the city code, Section 110.165A, regarding election results at the first regular meeting after the April election of mayor and council members, in order to bring the city code into conformance with the city charter.
And thank you. A staff report, please?
Thanks, sir. An inconsistency's been discovered between the city charter and the city code. Charter, Section 9.3 provides that the council shall declare the results of municipal elections. City Code, Section 110.165A, provides that the council shall pass an ordinance certifying the results of municipal elections. The charter supersedes the code. In addition, the county clerk, as the election authority, is responsible for certifying election results. Therefore, for those reasons, we are bringing forth for your consideration a simple amendment to the code, changing the word "certifying" to "declaring" in Section 110.165A.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2969.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2969, the code amendment, certifying election results.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2969. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hubach?
There's a little bit more that needs to be done on this particular issue, which is Section 165. But I will settle for this with the understanding that when we had our retreat, I believe, Mr. Mayor, you said that there were several items that might, in the municipal code, we might want to bring up for discussion and this might be one of them. But I will go ahead and take a half a loaf rather than a whole loaf right now.
Other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries unanimously. And we'll skip the last item. Oh, touche, touche. May I have the reading of Resolution 1435?
The reading of Resolution 14-35 by title only. A resolution of the City of Raymore, Missouri appointing Jim Fearborn as acting city manager.
A staff report?
Thanks, sir. Vacancy will exist in the position of city manager as of Thursday, June 12, 2014, before the city council for approval as a resolution appointing Jim Fearborn as acting city manager until a new city manager has been appointed by the council.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Resolution 1435.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Resolution 1435, the appointment of Jim Fearborn as acting city manager.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution 1435. Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries unanimously. And that concludes new business. We're into public comments. If anybody in the audience would like to get up and make a comment, please keep your, identify yourself and keep your comments to the new standard, three minutes. Seeing no one, I'll close the public comments and move to my handy-dandy sheet of randomly listed council members. This evening, we will begin the mayor-council communication with Councilmember Boehner.
I'm surprised, but I don't have any comment this evening.
Oh, the opportunity to go first and just slip through your fingers. Councilmember Stevens, you're up next.
No comments tonight.
Councilmember Hubach?
Yes, at our, at our retreat several weeks ago, we talked about striping on the, the city streets and how we would like for it to be a little bit different so it's easier for all of us to see. What I would like to have, the group, the council recommended to Public Works, that they look into seeing some options that we might have so that we can have better striping. I know that they talked about the cost, but sometimes the cost is very small compared to the results. And if the rest of the council agrees, I would like to see us get started on doing that so we can have it in time for the budget.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Hubach. Councilmember Kellon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Dale Jacobson in the audience tonight. Congratulations on the appointment of TIF commission and thank you for the willingness to serve. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Del Galan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I want to say thanks to Eric for his years of service, service with the City of Raymore. We're glad to have you for so many years and welcome Mr. Fearborn to his new position. Just repeating, the Arts in the Park, June 21st, we heard from Parks and Rec at the beginning from 10:00 to 4:00 at the Farmers Market Park. And I also want to remind everybody, this Friday, June 13th, is Relay for Life from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. It's not too late to sign up. You can come down Friday evening to the Raypec Stadium, the football stadium down by the high school, and register the night of the event. All of the proceeds go to the American Cancer Society and it's a very fun event to get your team together and take turns walking around the track. Lots of fun activities for kids and families during the event and, again, supports a very worthy cause, the American Cancer Society. So if you don't have plans on Friday night, come on down to the stadium from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And us old folks don't stay that late, but the kids usually stay all night.
Thank you. Councilmember Morehead?
I will try to be brief. The three minutes is gonna push, push me here. You know, for me, this has been a number of weeks since we've been here, so, you know, I've had an opportunity to really appreciate how people intersect with each other's lives. First of all, going back to May and the, the wonderful event we had out in front of City Hall honoring fallen officers who make a commitment to us. I'm always reminded of the fact that I'm told to run away from problems, but they run toward them and, and they do a wonderful service for us and deserve that recognition and do make an impact in our lives. In addition, Mr. Berlin, you know, you've been here a long time and your impact and your involvement in our community is felt and seen in a lot of little subtle ways. You made the comment about how hard the staff works and, to me, that's because of your strong, consistent management. And so you will be missed and appreciate all your service. I want to say that I had an opportunity to celebrate the citizen here in Raymore this week, Joel Nelson, who was ordained 50 years ago. And so all the lives he's touched, including my baptism and the funeral of my brother. One of the greatest joys I experienced this week was the Silver Lake Fishing Derby. Nothing sweeter than to see two girls between the ages of six and eight catching 14 fish in one hour. Incredible. But there's nothing sweeter than to hear a child laugh. Although the fish weren't really laughing, they were terrorized, but it was wonderful to see these children. to see these children. And I want to welcome into the family the Sotarts. It was wonderful that they've been able to join us, and we embrace them in our family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Just two things. One, I concur with and echo Councilmember Hubach's comments on striping. I really think that we should look at pursuing a more robust striping program as part of our street maintenance, and I would certainly be interested in that. I know there were some other interests from the council at the retreat as well. And, Mr. Berlin, I wish you well in your future endeavors. I would echo Councilmember Morehead's comments. I think your tenure here has well-served the city, and we certainly see the effects of the time that you've been here, and the growth of the city, and the great quality of life that we have. Thank you, sir.
And Councilmember Westcott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, too, want to thank Dale Jacobson for his willingness to serve. You know, it seems that we've had a challenge or a drought of willing applicants to sign up on board, so I encourage everybody to go out and look to see what vacancies are available. There are a few. I also want to thank Eric for his service. Even though we haven't always seen eye to eye, I think for the majority of the three and a half years that I have served, that it has been an honor to serve with you, and so thank you for your service. And lastly, I think it was noticeable that I voted against a couple issues tonight. And I didn't speak out against it then, but I will share about it now. I was strongly opposed to the financing mechanism to which that organization and that project is utilizing. I think it's extremely unfortunate that our Missouri Housing Development Corporation chose to fund a development here in Raymore with a project or with money that is actually designed to encourage development in blighted areas. You know, when you look it up and you look at the history of the program and the projects, you know, you see areas in urban cores of Kansas City, of Detroit, of, you know, of New York City, you know, which is what that program was designed to do, was to encourage development in those areas, which Raymore, you know, does not fall within those areas. Utilization of that project also provides an unfair advantage to those organizations that use it, as opposed to the ones who come in and actually pay market rate to develop housing and to develop the projects within Raymore. So, again, I think it's extremely unfortunate that the MHDC chose to award that.
Thank you. I've got a couple of notes, and the first set of notes, I'm going to ask the city manager to make sure that I get everything captured correctly from the meeting that we had earlier today. Earlier today, Matt Killian, district engineer with MoDOT, was out and met with city manager Berlin, assistant city manager Fearborn, director of Economic Development Thompson, and city engineer Crass and I, a talk about the proposed three-quarters cent sales tax that's going to be on the August ballot. Specifically, he wanted to share with us how much revenue they were thinking that would generate, and what sort of money would come to this area of Cass County. The engineer said that it would generate $5.4 billion over 10 years, and would bring $131,000 yearly to Raymore. Okay, I'm getting a nod, that's correct. And bring in $335,000 a year to the county, and this would be money that could be used for roads and that sort of stuff. He went on to say that the specific projects that would be awarded will be announced on Wednesday. The I-49-58 interchange is on that list about midway through the 10-year period. They would take that 58 interchange with 7149 and improve it so that the traffic could flow. He was hesitant to say exactly what kinds of improvements, because they're still doing some engineering work. And also, there'd be $500 million set aside to improve I-70 to six lanes. They have this information out on their website, and I'll give their website. It's www mo dot dot org forward slash moving forward. If you go out to mo dot, you can find your way to that, and hopefully, on Wednesday morning, that's where they'll have the projects listed. Did I capture that meeting, or did I miss anything in there?
No, sir, that was the gist of it.
Okay, thank you. It was a quick meeting, and it was an informational meeting, so. Next thing I've got here is a weather-related emergencies document, plans from four class groups, Miss Marloes, Newkirk, Ramirez, and Copenhagen, had their students draw up some weather emergency plans, and presented it to me and to Director Murdoch, and Superintendent Monsis was there also. They also made four presentations, and I'd like to make two comments. First, I think every one of the students spelled my last name correctly. That is amazing. Second, some of their penmanship is great. Oh, and I should mention, these are third graders. And finally, on their presentations, they had, was it four? Four presentations, wasn't it? They had four presentations with slides and music and stuff like that. I will be passing this off to the chief, so that she could read through it and see if there's anything we can glean from it on weather-related emergencies. There are comments that you should talk to your mom and dad. We might want to modify that just a little bit. But it was a great presentation. It is really cool to see just how bright third graders are. And finally, Mr. Berlin, it's been a great run here. You've been involved with some of the fastest-growing parts of Raymore. You've done a lot of work when things get slowed down a little bit, so we could focus on other things, and I really appreciate that. You're leaving a well-developed staff that I'm sure will be able to carry on as we begin a hunt for somebody to fill your absolutely large shoes. Congratulations on your move. Raymore will still be here, you know, five years from now, when you decide to cool your heels and come on back, so. We do not have reason to go into executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one point of reflection was brought up by Mr. Kennedy. The Walter Buck Fishing Tournament, for those of you that are new to town, Mr. Kennedy himself hasn't been here that long. Chief Buck was chief of police here in Raymore, and I'm sure Chief Zimmerman, at her time with Kansas City, knew Chief Buck about two or three police chiefs ago, if I remember correctly. And he kind of had a reputation among law enforcement and others in the community as kind of the Andy Griffith sheriff of police chiefs. He liked to spend his off time at Silver Lake and different places fishing. And that's where the history of that fishing tournament came from. I just thought that would be interesting to note, if you're not familiar with that. I've been in Raymore for 20 years, and I remember Chief Buck and worked over at Bolton at that time, and so just kind of a good story to remember, that we've continued that legacy for quite some time since Chief's passing, and I just want to bring that up, sir. Thank you.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, move that we adjourn our June 9, 2014 city council meeting.
Second.
Motion on the second to adjourn. All in favor? We're in adjournment. Thank you.